Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 20th, 2018, meeting of the Dover Area School Board. Maybe we should move this meeting outside on a nice day like today. This is wonderful. Before we start, though, if you'd please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Bancho, could we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Rothhauser.
Here.
Mrs. Mealy.
Here.
Mrs. Herman.
Here.
Mr. Emmig.
Here.
Mr. Eifert.
Here.
Mr. Delauter.
Here.
Mr. DeSho.
Here.
And Mr. Cook.
Here.
All nine members are present.
Okay, first on our agenda is our presentations and celebrations for this evening. Mrs. Kroom.
Okay. Our first presentation tonight, I'd like to welcome the Junior Achievement BizTown Group from Weigeltstown Elementary. Come on up. I'd like to share that this is an activity that every sixth grader in the district participates in. It involves two pieces. One, the first piece is an interview for jobs with numerous administrators, and the second piece is a trip to the Junior Achievement BizTown. As someone who has had the pleasure to interview future engineers and teachers from BizTown, it really is wonderful how prepared the students are and what a nice job the teachers do getting them prepared. Mrs. Huffnagle.
I'm very excited to share my senior teachers here, our sixth grade teachers. Mr. Brower's here, Ms. Warner, Ms. Kazar.
Baby Lucas.
Yep, and your little baby.
We heard, we heard, Baby Lucas.
Yeah, and his teacher's on as well. And some really fabulous sixth grade students have come to share their experiences at BizTown. Would you like them to step to the mic as they talk?
If you don't mind, we appreciate that, yeah.
All right, so, I'm over here, just kind of shuffle through. And they have some awesome technology. This presentation was totally student-created.
Make sure you speak into the microphone, please, Tuesday.
I did not demonstrate.
Do you want to have a seat to be able to, or do you need to be standing up to do the presentation? Yes, yes. I'm curious to see, how many...
Please just make sure you speak into the microphone, because otherwise it won't record.
Oh, you can't, okay.
Thank you.
I'm curious to see, how many of you have been to JA BizTown either as a student or as a parent volunteer? That's awesome. That's great. We have been doing the program for many years. It's an awesome program because it actually allows our kids to experience real life, and it also incorporates a cross-curricular experience, and we get to do all kinds of activities in all of our subjects, and it's a great experience. So, go ahead.
Yeah, this was a really neat opportunity for me because I actually went to JA BizTown as a student, so it's neat to come full circle and be able to go back as a teacher this time. It was definitely the most memorable field trip experience that I ever had as a student, and it's just something you would not get to experience in any other way. And so this year, I had the opportunity to go back and help the students prepare on the front end so that they were ready to go for the big day. So, today, we have four of our students from the City Hall at JA BizTown, and our tech specialist for sixth grade back here, Tucker Nace, has our presentation ready to go, and they've worked really hard to share a little bit about their day at JA BizTown.
Good evening. My name is Shaila Schimmel, and I was the District Attorney. During JA BizTown, I handed out an attorney fee to every business CFO. I also used my attorney's notebook to solve criminal cases. I went to each business and collected the case clues. To solve one of my cases, I worked with the biochemist to get blood typing and hair analysis. Before we went to BizTown, we wrote letters to our peers to receive in BizTown. The package handler delivered our letters to our business and put them in our mailbox. Also, prior to going to BizTown, we had interviews. To prepare for interviews, we filled out a job application. On our job application, we put three jobs that we would enjoy at BizTown. We were interviewed by teachers, volunteers, and the principal. They asked us questions such as, "Why would you like this job?", and "Are you dependable?", and give an example.
Hello, my name is Mary Alice Craig. I was mayor of JA BizTown when Weigeltstown Elementary went. In order to get there, I had the second-most overall votes and the most mayor votes. I first found out that I was going to be mayor the day after Election Day on the morning announcements. Later on that afternoon, everyone found out what job they were going to do at BizTown. A lot of people were thrilled, and some people were not as happy. Even though some people didn't think that they were going to have fun at BizTown, everyone did well working with others in their businesses. Employment letters had our name, our business that we were going to work at, our jobs, and our homeroom teacher's name. When I was looking for Citizen of the Day and Quality Business of the Day, I was looking for hard work, dedication, on-task working, teamwork, and being kind. Some reasons that I didn't pick certain people or businesses was because of arguing and not cooperating. I had a list of boys, girls, and businesses that were candidates for the awards.
Good evening. I'm Andrew Merkel. I got elected for Deputy Mayor by having the third-most votes out of all the people who ran. I handed out business cards, pencils, and cupcakes to try and get people to vote for me. We got elected by first, writing our speeches, hanging up posters, with help from our campaign managers, and then we handed out whatever we brought to the election. Before JA BizTown, what we did to prepare was we practiced writing checks, deposit slips, and check registers in our JA BizTown checkbooks. We also practiced more JA BizTown activities in our JA BizTown practice booklets.
Good evening, School Board. I'm Owen Krasinski, and during our time at JA BizTown, I was Town Treasurer. During my part, I will be going over how well we managed both our break time and our finances in our checking accounts. To begin, I would like to say how well we managed our break time. First thing we did was go immediately to the bank. We would cash our first check between eight and nine dollars, depending on the complexity of the job that we had. After that, we would go to lunch, which was managed by JA BizTown's restaurant. There, we could eat and have fun. After that, which most of us only took half our break, then return to our JA BizTown jobs until our second break. During our second break, we would go back to the bank to cash our second check. After that, we would go have fun on our second designated shopping break. Afterward, apparently not a lot of us spent money because everyone ended with an average of nine dollars and eighteen cents in their accounts.
The one girl was not able to make it here tonight, so we have a video. She taped it today. Do we have to do it over on that thing? Is it on on the board?
Can you bring your computer up here, please? I'll put it by the...
I can troubleshoot. I got this. If you ever need help, Tucker's the one to ask. He's awesome.
Hi, my name is Kansas Tim Myers, and I was the nonprofit director at JA BizTown. Some of the things I had to complete were hand out donation bins for businesses to donate money. I also got to go to businesses to hand out certificates after they returned the paper I gave them. Then, at the end of the second green break, I went back around to the businesses to collect the donation bins. Some businesses donated a lot of money, and some donated none. Then, I went back to City Hall to count the money raised. I raised money by asking people to donate any money that they were not planning on spending. The last thing I did was prepare a speech to inform the citizens on how much money was raised and which place we were donating our money to. We donated our money to SPCA.
Was it ninety-one dollars? And they said that was the most that any school had donated, so it was exactly...
We'll go out here to get it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great job.
Can I say something?
Certainly.
Just before you guys leave, or I guess I missed them. I just wanted, I wanted to say, as a parent of my daughter who was in the class, I've seen these kids from kindergarten, and I'm going to get all misty-eyed. They did a phenomenal job. I was in the bank as a parent volunteer, and to see them get into the roles I had, my tellers were, "Good morning, how can I help you?". And they really stepped into the roles, and as a parent, a volunteer, school board member, again, I'm getting all, like, teary-eyed. You guys are a phenomenal group of kids, and the work that you did and everything you put into it was amazing, and keep up the good work. So, you guys did great. And the teachers, the support, and Mrs. Huffnagle, everybody, thank you so much. You guys are great.
And we just were doing, we were doing ratios, and we had to bring in profits again, and they got it. Mr. Brower, how about it?
Oh, yeah.
It was so good because we were able to pull in from the past to the present with the curriculum. It was great.
And the fact that they raised the most. JA BizTown actually said that was the most for the York County SPCA that any school district had raised, so...
And I think that says about their hearts.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tanner Wallace. Tanner is here tonight to share his update with the board on his Eagle Scout project.
Can you talk into the microphone, please?
Yeah, you can pull it forward.
I wanted to share my finished Eagle project with you. We built cabinets and painted them, cleaned the drumline room, painted and put in new drop ceiling. Then, we finished, then we installed the finished cabinets and organized all the drums into the cabinets. Thanks to 200 hours of labor, $960 in donations, and $588 in materials from Ace Hardware, York Roofing, and Jaeger Supply Company. Mr. Bradshaw, friends, and teachers all loved the finished room. Thank you for letting me do my Eagle project. I will receive Eagle Scout rank at the end of March.
Tanner, as somebody who has about killed themselves seventeen times walking in and out of that room the way it was before, it is phenomenal what you've accomplished in there. Absolutely is great. So, thank you for saving me from a broken leg or a broken arm at this point, so, thank you.
Next on our celebrations, I'd like to ask Mr. Eifert to come out front, and I'd like to ask the following students to come forward. Cassidy Kopenhaver. Crimson Hoag. Denver Heim. Amon Maely.
It's Amin.
Amin Maely. Not even Amin. Okay, well, these students qualify...
Would you like to come up?
Yeah, yeah, why don't we, there we go.
I'll take Amin's.
Okay.
They had musical rehearsal until it was like just a little bit.
So, we're gonna give that gift to you. These students are four students who qualified for the PMEA All-State Vocal Jazz Ensemble. And what's special about these four students is that there were only twenty positions available this school year, if I'm correct, and all four of them are from Dover. So, that is just really something to celebrate. So, would you give them our congratulations? All right, is Mr. George Bradshaw here? There he is. Mr. Bradshaw has been named the 2018 recipient of the Pennsylvania Music Educator Association District Seven Citation of Excellence Award. We are so proud of him, and he will be recognized at the annual PMEA convention in April. Congratulations. And finally, would Mr. Nick Enlick come forward, please? Mr. Enlick has been named the Pennsylvania Association for Health, Phys Ed, Recreation and Dance Teacher of the Year. Nick was honored at their annual convention in Valley Forge on Friday, November 17th. Congratulations, Mr. Enlick. I wanted to see a dance out of him.
Next on our agenda is our communications period. We have our student board representatives, Sarah and Sophie.
Good evening. For Dover Elementary, on February 14th, they hosted nearly 400 people for a breakfast with loved ones. All students were able to invite one parent or one grandparent to join them for the breakfast. Thank you to the PTO for organizing that wonderful event. In honor of Dr. Seuss's birthday, we will drop everything and read Dr. Seuss books on Friday, March 2nd. During the week of February 26th through March 2nd, we have planned special activities relating to Dr. Seuss, including Whoville Hair Day, Thing One and Thing Two Day, Wear an Animal on Your Shirt Day, Pajama Day, and Wear a Shirt with Words. Our spring book fair is scheduled for March 16th, 19th, and 20th. These dates are tentative based on the weather. And our next community event will be March 24th. We will be roller skating at Fountain Blue. All are invited to join us for a wonderful evening of skating. For Live Elementary, talent show practice and preparation has begun. The live talent show is scheduled for Friday, March 9th, and that's to begin at 6:00 PM in the high school auditorium. Come out and see our talented students. 2018 National School Counseling Week was recognized February 5th through 9th, thanking to Mrs. Fleisch and to all the Dover school counselors. Read Across America Week will be celebrated February 26th to March 2nd. Each day will be a theme day focusing on the love of reading, and the week will culminate with a reading challenge, with the winning student receiving a gift certificate to Sarah's Creamery, and the winning classroom will receive a pizza party. Live PTO Family Swim Night is scheduled for Friday, March 16th at the Intermediate School. And for North Salem, this past week, our students participated in Career Week. Students had opportunities to explore various careers and career paths. On Friday, students at North Salem dressed for success in their appropriate career-related attire. North Salem Elementary will be having Book Bingo on Monday, February 26th in celebration of Read Across America Week. Feel free to take a vacation night and visit North Salem Elementary on Wednesday, February 28th for their multicultural fair. The event will begin at 6:00 PM and will showcase the students' projects, performances, and they will have food trucks available to the community. Onto Waggles Town. On Friday, February 2nd, they wrapped up the Waggles Town Puppy Bowl/Kitty Kickoff Pet Drive. They collected a total of 231 items to be donated to the York County SPCA and the Susquehanna Service Dogs. As part of the drive, students were able to vote for their favorite Super Bowl team. The Eagles won 186 to 45 over the Patriots. Waggles Town students know how to pick a winner. February 12th through 16th was Random Acts of Kindness Weeks. Rack Week is a week-long celebration of kindness. It is our chance to have fun being a little extra kind. Students and staff participated in a variety of theme days to promote random acts of kindness. Waggles Town Elementary students will be participating in Jump Rope or Hoops for Heart events the week of February 20th during their physical education classes. We look forward to this annual event to bring awareness to heart health and raise funds for the American Heart Association. Sorry about that. Read Across America is a national celebration of the students' literature contributions of Dr. Seuss. This special event runs from Monday, March 26th to Friday, March 2nd. Sorry, February 26th to March 2nd. Students and staff are looking forward to participating in special theme days. We are excited to celebrate Read Across America Week.
For the Dover Intermediate School, the soaring eagles for the second quarter, students who exhibited the characteristics of proud were invited to have lunch with Mrs. Gross on January 23rd. The academic awards recognition celebration was held on January 31st. Students who earned honor roll status for the first and second quarters and the first and second quarter soaring eagles were invited to the celebration. Second-quarter honor roll and distinguished honor roll students were recognized with a special ice cream treat at lunch and a movie on February 2nd. Second-quarter PBIS reward was held. Students participated in a minute-to-win-assembly. Their winter spirit assembly was held on February 9th. The winter dance was held on February 16th, and their grade-level PBIS reward will be held on February 23rd. For the Dover High School, DAHS had a number of athletes qualify for district championships. Both the girls and boys basketball programs qualified for district playoffs. Wrestlers Matt Rodriguez, Matthew Lehman, and Mason Lewis will compete at district championships on Thursday in Hershey. A number of swimmers and divers qualified for the district championships. Divers will compete tomorrow at Big Spring High School, and swimmers will compete next weekend at Cumberland Valley High School. Our spring production of Beauty and the Beast will be held March 2nd through 4th in the DHS auditorium. There will also be a character breakfast this Saturday. The Dover FFA chapter held its annual pig roast last week. Thank you to those board members and district administrators who were able to attend. The Dover High School will be holding a faculty talent show in March. The talent show will be the Quarter Three Reward through our PBIS program. Next Tuesday, the student PBIS team and link leaders will be traveling to Bishop McDevitt High School to attend the Jostens Renaissance Conference. This conference empowers students to be positive agents of change for culture within their schools and community. And last, the Dover High School had a number of students receive recognition through the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards Program. Sophie Barnes received the Gold Key Award in Poetry and will now be entered in the national level competition.
Okay, as always, a lot of great things happening in our schools. Do any board members have any questions or comments on anything?
Just congratulations to Sophie over there.
Okay, ladies, you're free to stay or free to head out whenever you choose. Okay, next on our agenda is our first public comment period. This is for items on or off of tonight's agenda. It is a three-minute period for each speaker. If you have anything that you would like to comment on, I ask that you come to the microphones, and please speak directly into the microphones so that we can record it, and also state your name and address for the record, and also sign in on the sheet that is on the table. So, with that, we'll begin our first public comment period.
Address is 298 Birmingham Church Road, East Berlin. I, and if the response of the attendees of the Act 34 hearing on January 9th, 2018, was any indication most of the taxpayers strongly object to the high school building project as described? The need for the project as described was not demonstrated nor later satisfactory clarified. I have become aware the comments that you don't have to answer, and public opinion will not have an effect on the board, as I have watched this project forge ahead no matter what. But, let me address some of the concerns. On the DoverSD.org website, under Capital Projects, under Frequently Asked Questions, there are statements that I believe to be misleading and intended to misdirect public opinion. What if Washington Township? In the timeline, November 10, 2014, York County Court of Common Pleas issued a decree to create the Washington Township Independent School District and transferring the matter to the State Board of the Pennsylvania Department of Education. You neglected to show that the decree stated, quote, "Based on the representations of council for the two districts, there are no debts or obligations of Dover which shall be assumed by Northern." And yet, you state preliminary review of the Commonwealth Pennsylvania Code indicates that if the transfer is approved, Washington Township's proportionate share of the project will follow WTIST. I am astounded that anyone would think that any court would consider grounds for charging someone for future projects when they have been trying to leave for years, and the only real obstruction has been the lawyers trying to keep them from moving, especially when from the beginning it was pointed out that move would be beneficial for Dover due to the space and logistic issues. I have copies of the decree, but I know you're aware of it. Basically, if I filed for a divorce, but her lawyers kept delaying it for years, then nearing the final court date, my wife wanted to demolish our house, to build a bigger house, and get an updated bathroom and kitchen, and she proceeds with the multi-year project, would any judge say I would have to take out a mortgage for her new house after we've been divorced? That's kind of what you're stating. PlanCon. In May of 2016, the district completed all necessary steps to apply for PlanCon reimbursement for this project, which was prior to the moratorium, and approved by PDE. The project reimbursement possible from PDE could range from four to $5.6 million. The high school renovations...
Mr. Peters, I need you to wrap it up, your time is up.
Okay. Bottom line is, unless, and I haven't seen anything, you applied for a variance to PlanCon. You don't qualify for a PlanCon reimbursement based on the 20-year rule unless you apply for a variance, and I have not seen anything to that. And I will wait for my two minutes.
My name's Michelle Wallace, and I live at 506 Oakwood Drive. And I am the Vice President of the Dover Music Boosters as well as a member of the Parent Advisory Committee. I'm a huge supporter of the new high school for several reasons, but mainly because it's needed. My husband and I are both Dover alumni. We have a daughter that graduated last year and a son that's currently in the 10th grade. When we walk the halls of the Intermediate School, it's like walking through a time capsule. Nothing has changed. I could go on and on about the safety of several of our schools, but that has been brought up enough. We all know the countless areas that need to be addressed. Given the recent events, our kids, teachers, and faculty should always be our number-one priority. A new, modern high school will do just that. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of the Music Boosters. Both of my kids have been and are involved in the marching band. That department alone is busting at the seams. In case you haven't heard, the marching band will be adding over two dozen students this summer after you take into the consideration those that have graduated and new kids coming from the IS. To me, this speaks volumes. Our kids are excited about coming to the high school to be part of the band. To accommodate our growing numbers, we need the facilities both inside the school as well as outside for the marching band equipment. I get to see firsthand on a regular basis the effects of overflowing storage rooms for instruments, uniforms, and equipment. The band works very hard to perform to the best of their ability, both on and off the field. The same can be said for the choirs. They have outgrown their spaces well. Let's face it, we have a wonderful music department in which the students want to be a part of. I hear grumblings about our kids not needing a Taj Mahal to go to school in. I've seen the layout of the new school, and from what I can tell, it's meeting the needs for the kids to have every opportunity to excel in the path they choose to take. This new high school will not benefit my kids, but many of my neighbors' and friends' kids. Honestly, I'm a little jealous knowing what an awesome school the students will get, will have to get the best education that Dover has to offer. Change is not easy, and sometimes not what everyone wants, but let's look at what effect it will have on our students. These kids are our future. Why shouldn't we be investing in them?
Thank you, Mrs. Wallace.
I'm Corinne Brown, 2640 Dunbarton Drive, and I'm here to reiterate what Michelle has already shared with you, but from a different perspective. I homeschooled my children for a very long time, but we utilized the Dover Public School System through their music department, starting when Mr. Mal was doing the fifth and sixth grade building. Well, North Salem, it was a fifth and sixth grade building originally. And the growth that has occurred within that department, there are studies and studies and studies of what music education will do to the academics of a person's life and keeping them in an educational setting and keeping them active and a strong part of their community for the positive. My children have all finished their careers at Dover High School. One spent four years and graduated in 2011. One spent two years at the high school and graduated in 2016. And my third child will be graduating this June, and she did her junior and is finishing her senior year there now. I had great concerns when I first brought my first child to the Intermediate School because of the physical condition of the school, and that was many, many years ago. So, there will be no benefits other than to this community, which is growing by leaps and bounds. When I moved here 26 years ago, there was one traffic light in Dover, and we certainly have grown. And I feel like we need to change the educational system here and be proactive for these students and not reactive to what we feel. and not reactive to what we feel we should have done years prior. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
I don't have any statistics or anything fancy, anything prepared. I just want to say that I have a daughter in first grade, and nobody wants to pay higher taxes. Nobody wants the cost of that. However, we do want nice facilities for our children. So I would much rather have a tax increase and her go to a beautiful new high school when she's that age, a long time away, than the intermediate school, which is in desperate need of repairs from what I've seen when I was there for swimming lessons and sign-ups at the little bit of time that I was there. So overall, just, I am definitely in support of building a new high school because, like they've already said, like, our children are the future, and we need to make sure we have facilities for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Chris Mal, 3205 West Canal Road, Dover. Couple comments, questions, but one thing I learned this week is my daughter, she's in North Salem, went to do Envirothon, and she learned that the program wasn't available to her. So I asked my wife, like, what other programs may or may not be available to my daughter, and I learned that there was a spelling bee and a math club available at some other schools as well as Envirothon. Could we look to maybe making those programs available at all the elementary schools and, like, maybe there's not participation, you don't have it, but if there's someone who wants to participate, it becomes available?
I can answer to that. Through our budget discussions this year, we are looking at placing an Envirothon coach at the elementary. Some of the struggles, and I apologize, I'm going to pause your time. Some of the struggles we have, though, is on some years of getting teachers or staff to cover those clubs. So that's kind of some of the reason that that is not in place there.
Yeah. So I figured that, and so I'm glad maybe Envirothon will be available next year at the very least. But I was thinking, from a budgetary perspective, like, maybe we should find the budget to make sure there are people in place to provide those programs. And maybe it isn't always a volunteer, but we just hire someone to do it.
And they, they currently are hired, they get paid a stipend to do that, and it is currently being considered in the, in the next budget. We just didn't have it for this year.
For, for the Envirothon, math, and spelling?
I have not heard about the math and spelling yet, but we'll know that. Thank you.
Those are the sorts of things that I think that we should be thinking about as well as a new school. Kind of the point here. Were you able to put together the five-year projections?
I just, I have the five-year projections. I have made them available to the board.
You want to pause this time while you're answering?
Oh, I'm sorry. I have made them available to the board, and they will, whenever they're more concrete through the budgeting project, process, they will be released as part of our budget packet in April. The board had time to review them.
So all the anticipated capital costs and big, big spend, big-ticket items will be on there for the next five years?
Yes, they are, yes. They, we have, I have planned in the five-year projection for the principal and interest going forward.
One of the things that seems to be outstanding is the traffic study. And then I also think there, it hasn't been addressed too much, but the Fox Run Crossing from North Salem over to the high school, back and forth. And I just want to know, like, so you have a budget of $62 million, and you have your 8%, which takes you about $65 million. When mitigation associated with the traffic study and/or additional projects such as Fox Run Crossing, have they been included in your budget? Because those are costs that we're going to incur, and it seems that if you're going to promote a budget, that we should look at the entire package.
Yeah, those items are currently being talked about right now. I don't have specific details on them. I can refer to our architects are here or Mr. Nelson. I don't know what information we have right now for that. And we have been talking about it, though, and seeing what the possibilities are there. And there's other options maybe we can explore.
So the point I'm trying to make here is that those are expenses.
Yeah.
You got to account for them. You can't just push them off to the side and say, we'll get to it later, because the $65 million project turns into an $85 million project.
We are aware.
And that's not what people are thinking about. And I think just the last thing is, given the capital deployment here of $65 million and change, have you looked at the layout in terms of the way the new school is and the interaction between existing structures? And given the events of the week, make sure we've done some kind of risk assessment to ensure whatever money's spent, we are improving the safety of our children, not necessarily within the boundaries of the structure itself, but after they leave school or before they get there.
I'll answer your question since your time's up. We actually had a meeting last week in regards to door locks and the safety and security of our students and talked about, you know, how, how we can effectively plan for, and you're not going to be able to plan for every situation, obviously, but we want to make sure that we are doing our best to ensure the safety of our students.
Yeah, I know that you're doing your best, but there should be a risk assessment completed by professional people who do that sort of thing and not left to people who don't do risk assessments. So if you're going to be looking to make any changes and spending money, we just need to make sure that the money's spent wisely and we don't leave something uncovered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mal.
Mr. President, if I might, might add there, just in reference to that, that point there, we did have a shooter drill and an intruder drill last spring, which, you know, identified some things for us all to be aware of. So those discussions have been happening for a while now and are continuing.
Good evening. I'm Vicki Mills. I live at 13 Twin Bridge Court, East Berlin, and I too am in Washington Township. So I wanted to let, make sure the board is aware that we are also in favor of the new school. So my daughter's in 10th grade. She will be graduating by the time that the new school goes up and is available to the students. We, and, and someone had mentioned about the tax hike. So I get the taxes, but to us, it still comes down to the kids. What is the best thing for our children? That has been our stance in Washington Township, for those of us that have children, since six years ago when we started fighting this mess that's been going on. That has not changed. So I just wanted to make sure, I know three-quarters of you because we've been fighting this for a very long time, and for those I don't know, I just wanted to reiterate that Mr. Peters mentioned that there are a lot in favor of going to Northern. I wanted to make sure you knew a lot of us with children are not in favor. So, but we are in favor of the new school because, again, it's about our kids and what is best for our kids. Period, end of story.
Thank you, Mrs. Mills. Anybody else for public comment?
I'm just going to sit here.
Musical chairs for you, Sophie.
Yeah. So I just wanted to talk, being a senior.
Sophie, do you have a parent here?
Sorry, yeah, my dad's.
Okay.
I just wanted to talk, being a senior this year, I didn't get a course selection sheet, and I know that you guys don't have a whole lot of direct control over that, but one of my concerns about that was that there's no AP English, 11th grade, no, sorry, there's no 11th grade honors English offered next year. And I know this class has earned itself the nickname of death camp English. And while that partially is true, that class helped me decide what I wanted to do for the rest of my life. I was on the edge of teaching English, and then I took that class and I decided that is what I want to do. Yes, I did have a ton of homework, and yes, I put hours and hours and hours into that research paper, but that's not enough to take it away from the students. And I know that a lot of the concern has come from students from this year and from parents, but that class has prepared me for college classes. I now know how to do an epigraph. I know how to do a fully annotated bibliography with citations and things like that. So I just am asking you to consider, please keep that class. They need that class. I needed that class. And I may be a little biased, but that class needs to stay. So, thank you.
Anybody else for public comment tonight? Okay, seeing nobody moving, we'll move on to Board's President's Communication. I did want to announce that we did have a special executive session on February 13th to interview Dr. Patricia Maloney, who is on tonight's agenda for appointment as our new Assistant Superintendent, and to also discuss other confidential personnel matters. We then had an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss confidential personnel matters and to also meet some additional team members from Mr. Pratt, our solicitor, his firm, Oberbeyer. He introduced us to some of his team that can support us in our activities here in the district. So with that, I will move on to the approval of the minutes for tonight. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 18th, 2018 Board Meeting.
Is that moved?
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko. Next, we'll move on to tonight's consent agenda. There are three items that will not be on the consent agenda. They will be separate votes. There are two votes related to the potential building project as well as the contract for Dr. Maloney. So first, I would like to entertain a motion to approve all of the items listed under the consent agenda.
Is that moved?
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Before we vote, we will go down through each category to discuss any questions or comments anybody might have on any of the items related to the consent agenda. So first, we will go to the Curriculum and Professional Development Committee area. Any questions or discussion on items in that section?
We have an explanation of what the Act 80 days are for, for parents who might not be aware of what that means or what the potential might mean.
That is just if we should decide to use our professional development days in August and turn them into student days. It has, would have no, no effect on the parents at all. And we're just kind of seeing how the weather plays out this year. But it's, we can, if we turn them into student days, then we can have less than 180 days, student days, this school year. So it really wouldn't affect the parents at all. The student last day right now is Friday, June 1st. And so should we have more snow? That gives us a little flexibility.
With, with the goal of keeping graduation on the second?
Yes, 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 on the second, yes.
Okay. Any other questions on those items? Okay, we'll move on to Human and Fiscal Resources. Any questions or discussion there?
I had a couple of things I wanted to point out there for audience and those who might be watching as well. Down on item 13 with donations there, I believe this is the second month in a row where we received a donation aimed to try to help children in need with school lunches. And I know we talked about that a number of months ago with accounts where, you know, what we were going to do with that situation. We actually had a policy revision. And I just wanted to point out that several families in our community have made some donations there to try to help other kids, and I just thought that was a really neat thing. So kudos to those families that wanted to do that. I don't know if that might be something that would be an option or maybe a reach out to the community to help more children like that. There might be some families that would want to do that. So maybe that's an avenue that we ought to take a look at. So I just wanted to point that out.
Mr. Cook, while, while we're on that subject, just a question for Mrs. Benko. Can you provide us with the latest debt that's there, student debt related to food service?
The last time that I took a look at it, it was about $12,000. So it was maybe about two weeks ago. It tends to go down right after the holidays because people are getting on, making sure they have money in their accounts. And then it spikes back up through these next couple of months, goes back down at, you know, the end of the school year, and then further down at the beginning of next school year.
Okay, thank you.
And then the other, the other comment that I, or question that I had is related to the policy revisions, item 10, under Human and Fiscal Resources. And it's a policy, I don't have the number off the top of my head, regarding kindergarten registration.
201.
201.
Yeah.
Basically, the way that policy was, was stated there, I think there was some clarification based on what the state was requiring. And my question is, with the date of August 31st, being that the policy is affecting when a student can start first grade or the year after kindergarten, as long as they are age six by August 31st, they would qualify as being able to register for first grade. So backing that up a year would then mean that if your child has a birthday between, say, the start of school, which typically is around 22nd, 23rd now, and the 31st, we could potentially have a four-year-old starting kindergarten. Am I correct on that?
Yes. On the second page of the policy, it does reference, if a child is eligible for admission to kindergarten, she has, he or she has, has to attain the age of five on or before August 31st. So that is also in there.
Okay. So they still, they could potentially start as a four-year-old for a few days.
Correct.
Any other questions or discussion on items in that category? Okay, hearing none. We do not have anything under Safe and Supportive Schools tonight. We do not have anything under the Capital Steering Committee. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions?
LIU.
We have LIU.
Oh.
Okay. Yes, we have the LIU Special Education category for the LIU 2018-2019 budget. Any questions or discussion on that? Now we can move on with the motion and the second. Any other questions? And the motion carries. Okay, next on our agenda, I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint Dr. Patricia Maloney as Assistant Superintendent of the Dover Area School District effective February 21st, 2018.
Is that moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? And the motion carries. Welcome, Dr. Maloney. We're very excited to have you with us, Dr. Maloney.
Thank you.
Thank you.
(inaudible).
Okay. Okay. Now we'll move on to the capital improvement steering committee. I would like to, this is going to be a very long statement to read. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve and support the construction of a new Dover Area High School to be constructed on the current intermediate school site pending bid results within maximum building and project costs previously set forth by the board of directors. Support for this project is based upon the following: the unsustainable and aging infrastructure of our current intermediate school's physical plant and systems; the fact that this project will have an impact district-wide, opening the opportunity for a grade six through eight middle school, ultimately relieving spatial constraints in our elementary and intermediate school buildings; financial reasonableness of the options considered by the board of directors in regards to renovation and new construction; and the importance of our current Dover students and those of the future to be provided educational opportunities in a safe 21st century learning environment as it relates to educational programming and learning environments. Do we have a motion?
Is that moved?
We have a motion and a second. Questions, discussion?
Just wanted to make a comment. It's been a long time coming to this point, and, and there's a lot of people who've done a lot of hard work, a lot of explore, exploration, investigation. We as a board, I as a board member, have done a lot of thinking about this whole project and weighing on this whole project and trying to come to a conclusion, does it make sense? Does it not make sense? Weighing it all out. And many of the, the questions that have been raised in the last couple of weeks were questions that, trust me, we've, we've looked at, tried to evaluate, and taking everybody's input into consideration. I think it's important to note that, you know, we, the, the comments that were made at Act 34 weren't the only flavor that we heard. We did receive quite a few comments through the submission of emails and comments after that, over 60, over 70, actually. Do you want to speak to that effect?
It's almost 80.
Almost 80. Quite a few of them voiced their approval or, or, you know, they're basically weighing in, saying, I think we should move forward. So it's always a tough, tough subject to, to, you know, look at, and when it comes down to money and finances and things. And as a board member, you weigh all that out, and you weigh out what's best for the kids. And, you know, the kids are why we're here. So hopefully, you know, as we move forward, we haven't voted yet, but I just wanted to point that out, that this is definitely a decision that has been very, very strongly weighed out, and it's not a snap judgment decision that any of us are making.
I'd like to echo some of what Mr. Cook said. This is a process that has been going on for almost three years now. We've been living this, breathing this. It's been intense. We, we put a lot of hours and energy into this. The staff, the administration has put tremendous amounts of energy and work into this process. And as Mr. Cook said, this is not an easy, easy decision to make when you're talking about spending the kind of money we need to spend. It's a challenge. However, when you look at the situation that we are in, where we need to be, where we need to get, I also feel as though this is probably the best option out there for us. We've looked at multiple options. We took what was basically the next to the lowest cost, which we feel could provide us with where we need to be. To Mr. Cook's point, we heard, you know, a lot of comments at the Act 34 hearing. We heard a lot afterwards, too. I killed a small tree, printing the comments that we had received through email. And I know, you know, earlier comments had mentioned the overwhelming majority were against this. These are the emails that we received that were against this. These are the emails received that were for this project. So this spoke volumes to me alone right here, just seeing this, that there is a vocal majority out there that is also in favor of this. So as I said, we've been living this for three years now. It's time for us to make a decision, move forward, not just because we need to get moving forward, but also from a financial standpoint. You know, we're looking at an era of rising interest rates, and for every 10 basis points that interest rates go up, we've been informed that our costs would increase by $750,000. So to be responsible for our taxpayers, that's a significant number, you know, every 10 basis points, $750,000. And they're talking about the potential for four rate hikes in this year alone. Also, construction costs are going up at this point. We've already seen increases in costs since we started talking about this project. And that is something that we need to take into consideration so that we can get that locked in before, you know, it gets any worse. So with that, any other board members have anything that they would like to add to the discussion?
The only thing is, I know we need to do it for the kids, but the senior citizens are, are the ones that are going to suffer. And the average house right now, I did the average in the New Sunny Paper, is 160,000. Where we come up with 118,000, I don't know. But that includes all this small little houses in Thunderbird Trailer Park. The other question I have is, I've seen going over the comments today, that the comment was made that the high school cafeteria is not big enough. And if we're putting 900 students in, it probably still won't be big enough, according to what was put out on one of your emails. Also, we're taking the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade over to the high school, which you say is now inadequate to teach the high school students properly. What will change by moving the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in there that will be able to teach them properly?
I think one of the things we talked about is with the intermediate school, the students is bringing them over, bringing the other grade over, there will be a tremendous amount more room for them in the classrooms than in the hallway. Where, right now, at the intermediate school, the hallways are extremely narrow. So no, no size child can fit in that building. And as far as the cafeteria, right now, Teri, help me out, how many lunch, how many lunches do you have now? Four? Four at the intermediate, from 10:30 till 1 o'clock? The high school auditorium or the high school cafeteria will allow them to reduce that to at least three, if possibly two, which will be able to shorten their lunchtime and extend their academic time. And there's no way to increase the size of the intermediate school, and that's with just seventh and eighth grade. So the intermediate, the high school cafeteria is certainly big enough to accommodate the intermediate school. So are the hallways, so is the gym, so are the classrooms. They just are no longer accommodating the instructional programs at the high school.
Teri, Teri, if you could come to the microphone, please.
Hi. One of the big differences between the high school program and the intermediate school program is, at the intermediate school slash middle school level, we work as teams. So you're not going to have as much traffic as you currently do in the high school because they're going to be staying within the hallway areas. So right now, a lot of the things that were discussed with the new high school project had to do with the traffic and the traffic flow, so that students kind of worked around that square area and kind of kept flow going. We're going to be staying within kind of hallways as we work through our team procedure. So I think that with the changes and the upgrades that are going to be made to the high school base is already part of the building project, that we're going to see that we're going to be able to meet our needs in that building. And it also is going to offer, offer huge opportunities for our students that they no longer have throughout all of the shops and the, and the different things that are already established within that building, and then that whole music wing and arts wing that's already established in that building that we currently don't have in our building. So I can see that it'll really work for us because we just have a different team set up versus being all over the building, going to different classes. So I hope that's helpful.
I think one of the other things we need to keep in mind with this is with bringing the sixth grade into the middle school, we've talked about the value of that and the impact that would have on the elementary schools. We're starting to run into some real space issues there. So by moving sixth grade out and into the, what is the current high school to become a middle school, would alleviate a lot of the pressure that we have at those elementary buildings at this time. Anybody else have anything they want to add? Okay, hearing none, Mrs. Benko. And the motion carries. Okay. Moving on to our next agenda item, I would like to entertain a motion to approve Plan Con Part D and E as per the enclosures.
Is that moved?
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko. And the motion carries. Okay. Next on our agenda, Dover Eagle Foundation. I do know there was a meeting that was held recently between various community groups, the Eagle Foundation, Dollars for Scholars, and the Alumni Association as to how they can partner to support our efforts within the district. Mrs. Krim, did you have anything you wanted to add to that at this point?
No, I did get some feedback from a couple of staff members that attended, said it was a very good meeting, and I know the discussion is going to continue in the future.
Questions or discussions from anybody? Okay, York Adams Academy. Anything there we would like to discuss tonight?
We had our last meeting on January 30th, and the board did approve the budget for York Adams Academy, and the budget will be mailed to each school district for their approval as well. And our next meeting will be February 27th.
Thank you, Mr. Remick. Any questions or discussion? Okay, York County School of Technology, Mr. Delauter.
All you have is the, the York County School of Technology Authority Committee received an update on their gymnasium renovation addition. One thing we did find out is that their price tag came in about $750,000 more than originally planned on. So I think it was nine million dollars, and it's like 9.75 million now. So they are taking a look at seeing if maybe we, where they can pare that down to keep it at that nine million dollar price tag. Other than that, our next meeting is Thursday, which unfortunately we'll not be able to attend because of being here. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Delauter? Okay, LIU Special Education, Mr. DeSho, Mrs. Krim.
All I have is that the LIU submitted their budget to all of the school districts for approval this month, and we're just waiting for that. And we have a meeting next month, I believe, at 6:00.
Any questions?
Additionally, the LIU is in the process of hiring a new executive director, so they are doing a number of sessions with different groups. I'm going to be there on Monday. Kathy was there last week, just asking questions, what the district needs, and, and we're kind of listening and learning about their new direction.
Legislative, Mr. Roehser.
We're having an ongoing battle in Harrisburg as to see how we should redistrict our, what is it, 18 legislative districts for U.S. Congress. I don't know what the latest is, if they're going to court or not. They can't agree on how it should be done. The other thing is, U.S. Secretary of Agriculture is working with the dairy farmers, and as far as I know, we're going to have milk in school this year again, not again, back in school. Right now, we have skimmed milk and everything taken out of the milk. A health person with the insurance company I'm with was around, she said, we gave out products this year to our clients, and when they thaw the milk out, it looks like water. I said, it is. They took all the fat out, everything out, and then they fortified. And that's one of the things that has really hurt the dairy industry is that the children don't like milk that don't have any fat in it, and I don't blame them. That's it.
Questions for Mr. Roehser. Okay, PSBA, Mrs. Britton.
Nothing really new. There is a roundtable coming up March 15th or 12th, like 12th, in Mechanicsburg. And then I think there's some ongoing discussions as to help us with our new requirements that were the four training that was passed by the legislature last year, but we haven't really heard anything final on that.
Any questions? Okay, Dover Industrial Development Committee, Mrs. Herman.
Last meeting was canceled. We have one next Wednesday.
Any questions? Okay, Mrs. Krim, superintendent's report.
First, I'd like to thank Mrs. Huffnagle and her wonderful Weigles Town crew for their presentation tonight. It really is an honor when they ask you to come and interview kids for BizTown. It's, it's a great experience for you and the kids. And also, before you leave, take a look at the art because that's also compliments of Weigles Town. Today, we learned that Chad Murphy, one of our seniors, has been selected to receive the Certificate of Excellence from the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards Program. This award recognizes him as being in the top 10% of students completing community service within Pennsylvania. Additionally, he has been awarded the President's Volunteer Service Award, and will be, and we will, we will invite him to attend our board meeting next month. Just again, I, I love highlighting what our kids are doing. They are doing some awesome things, and they are being recognized, and that is just so much fun. And we just heard this one today, and I, I said to Mr. Rossler, awesome, I can tell you tonight, because normally I have to wait until my Friday report. So we are really very proud of Chad. Our last, we have, as you know, we have a couple three-hour early dismissals during the school year, and we had one last week that was truly focused on PSSA prep. So we have been working very hard with the teachers and the kids, preparing them for the PSSAs that come up next month, and so they're doing, they're doing really a great job. And finally, next month, we are going to have our first annual proud challenge. This is a PBIS. Look at the principal's face, this is awesome. I'm challenging them. I'm taking a team of administrators into each building, and we are going to interview students to see how well they know the expectations of the building. And then the winner is going to get a really ugly trophy that they're going to show for the whole year. We are looking for something that is awesome, and a pizza party for the teachers with us. So this is just a way to have fun and with our behavior and expectations, and to see how much we're really getting those expectations into the children, so.
Any questions or comments from Mrs. Krim? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our miscellaneous category for any other comments or observations from our board members tonight.
I just wanted to say, put a plug in for my daughter, but the competitive academics, the mock trial team, had, had an opportunity to compete against several other school districts in the county. And the idea is, they actually go into the judicial center, into, into a courtroom, sit before a judge, it was, in this case, was Judge Wren, and they try a case. They both do it from both the defendant's side as well as the plaintiff's side. And they, they act as both the attorneys as well as the witnesses. And they do the direct questioning as well as cross-examination. And during the cross-examination, they have no idea what that other attorney is going to do, and they have to think on their feet. And for the first time since the, the mock trial's been a part of Dover, they've won both their trials and are moving on. I think what they, they did a fantastic job, and I think even, what's better yet was, I think there was three seniors on the entire team, and most of them were freshmen and sophomores. I know, I couldn't do it. I was a master, just sitting there watching, but to be up there and, you know, doing that, I just thought it was awesome, and I just wanted to give them some, some kudos on that.
I want to echo that as a former mock trial team member, remember some years ago, it's, it's not easy. And the, the kids, they have to memorize a, kind of like a basic script that you know you go into, but again, what the other team... script that you know you go into. But again, what the other team comes at you with, you have no idea. Now, I was the killer closer, just going to say that. But it, it's not, it's not an easy thing to do. And I'm, I was super, super excited and super proud to see that our Dover team is, is being as successful as they are. So congratulations as a parent, and to staff and students.
Absolutely.
Mr. Roehser.
Yes, I'd said something Mrs. Croll about before, and she said that since I'm on New York Learning Center Committee to give reports, I was told when I was appointed by the former superintendent that my committee was not important, so I didn't need to give any reports at board meeting. But on January 23rd, we had a meeting on the updating our safety and security in there at the building, and we are going to replace existing cameras, put up new cameras, and have smartphones so they can communicate with the home office. Because, you know, the children that go in there do have certain problems, and by having cameras up now, they can watch what's going on in the school. And this, and we're having an alarm system put in, for a total cost of about $35,000. The interesting part about the whole thing is, they contacted Botec, and the teacher that's in charge of that division, and six students will be doing the wiring at the York Learning Center, and will not cost us nothing. And they will get recognition or on their resumes for a future job for doing this work. And they thought that was, we thought that was good, that we're working with another school, and saving money, and plus helping them learn an education. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Ryford, I, I failed to mention this during the consent agenda, but we have some retirees that are on our agenda tonight. And one of them's sitting in our midst, Deb Curry back here, and a number of others as well, that I just wanted to, to say thank you for all your years of service, and for all your hard work and efforts and flexibility throughout the years to take what's been put on your plate. Done a wonderful job, and you will be missed. So thank you, thank you for that. We have some others as well that have put in a lot of time. Mr. Janoski, for one. We have some nurses that are retiring who have put in years of service, 30-plus years of service in some cases. And those kind of folks are not easy to replace. So it's a quick vote on our part, but it's, it's a lifetime of achievement and accomplishments. I just wanted to take a few minutes and, and say thank you to everyone who, who was on our agenda tonight. We have some, some exciting promotions within our midst as well. Mr. Fessler, coming into the supervisor of custodians. So it's exciting for him. Mr. Wolfgang is resigning here at the end of the year. He's been a valuable asset to us as a district here, his pursuit of some, some exciting things in his future. So there's a lot of personnel issues, and, you know, what we're doing, it's all about people. So thank you to everyone who's been a part. So just wanted to make sure everyone was recognized. We don't want to overlook that.
If I did my math correctly, it was 111 and a half years of combined experience for all of those folks with us. And the school nurse actually took care of me on a few occasions, so she deserves her retirement. It's been a long time coming. So. Anybody else?
One question that showed up in the computer, is that for more safety reasons, or why is that page put on there now? We have to click off before we can get our emails.
That's just a different look for the login page, I believe. I don't think that's an extra security step or anything. It's just a new look to the Outlook, Outlook login.
It's not an extra step. It's, we might have changed 2016 migrating number, and that's just a new login. 2016 is over.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our last public comment period for the evening. This is a two-minute period for items on or off of the agenda. And again, please state your name and address for the record, and write them on the sheet as you speak at the microphones tonight.
I'd just like to talk.
Mr. Peters, if I could answer one of your questions real quick that you had about something that was on the webpage.
Yes.
That was preliminary review, and we have realized that that information is not correct, and it will be coming off of the website.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
From what I was hearing, there are space, space issues at elementary buildings currently. And one of the reasons, you know, is to move the sixth grade up to the middle school. Is that, okay, you're not going to answer that. I, I, I want to make a note that during a June 2015 hearing, DASD testified under oath that student capacity allowed for an additional 1,300 students. And yet, I, I still see where the middle school is, is crowded, and the elementary schools are getting crowded. And a lot of that could be solved, of course, by, we're in township leaving, that's 260 students going away. But aside from that, I, I'm curious about several things. If, looking at your options, one, two, three, and four, for the new high school, if it takes $26,300,000 in option one and three to renovate and add to the intermediate school, and it takes only $5 million in option two or four to fix up and convert the high school to the intermediate school, then why could the needs not be met for about $31,300,000, and spend more for actual education, teachers, mentors, guidance, training? I have always believed, will always believe, that teachers are really the most important part of the school. And I don't think that, that just having buildings where we run up debt of, you know, eventually, it's going to be somewhere around 200 million, where doing that makes more sense, where you may end up having to cut programs, cut music, cut something in order to meet your budgets, in order to stay within guidelines. I have more to say, but that's my time to-
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Good evening. My name's Steve Stefanovich. I'm 4803 Carlisle Road. And I didn't realize the second public comment was even shorter than the first. I'm not sure if I can get done that quick or not. I am one of the Dover Township Board of Supervisors, and I wanted to thank Tracy Crum and Jennifer Benko for meeting with me a couple weeks ago. We had a very nice discussion about several issues, both from the township standpoint, and also from just a personal standpoint as a, as a resident. One of them was the communications between the school board and the township supervisors, which there's very little right now, and it probably could benefit both of us to increase that more over time. So one thing I did was come here this evening trying to explain quickly a few things that we're doing, and in support of both the school and all the residents of the township. So I was going to go over a couple here real quick. We are doing a lot of infrastructure projects right now. There hasn't been a tremendous amount done over the past 10 to 15 years, so that is one of our huge priorities, both for sewer and water. And one of them is the sewer lines coming down behind Max Ice Cream, going up around towards the school to increase the size of them, which is pretty obvious. What that's going to do, it's going to allow more users on, on the system. We also, ourselves, are addressing a maintenance building issue right now. We have just gone out to bids, and they may actually be back soon for a building for ourselves. We can't even keep all of our own equipment inside at the present time, and that's pretty poor. When, as a simple example, a plow driver has to take his plow off when he's done plowing, just to get the truck inside, and then he has to put it back on again if it snows again tomorrow. So we're, we're addressing those issues also. There is a north of the borough, we call it, a sewer and water project, moving along pretty well right now, to get sewer up past George Street, past the church, past the, the vet business up there and all that. That's another important one for us. At the planning commission meeting that was just held this month, the school presented, the school architects, I guess, presented your, your plan in its first final stage, or whatever it was, it was called at that time. And there was some talk there about Intermediate Avenue, and about the suggestion to accomplish it at this time. Let's not wait. It could be a huge savings in money to both of us to at least think about and, and consider getting Intermediate Avenue up to the school's boundary line, because we feel pretty strongly that it is going to continue out to wherever. I mean, I know where it's going to go approximately, but not what it's going to be approximately. So there has been several designs presented already, and the planning commission people, I talked to the chairman, they asked-
Mr. Stefanovic, I'm sorry, I've held everybody else to their time limit.
I know. I don't know how else to-
Can you come back Thursday night?
Yes.
That would be great. It's a planning night.
We can actually, if you, if you want to talk Thursday, we can actually add an agenda item for the township.
One other thing I just wanted to let you know, the comprehensive plan for Dover is at its 10-year renewal this year. So we are going to be asking for someone to assist from your standpoint, or more than one person, if you would like, to help out with that comprehensive plan.
Yeah, Thursday night, if you could come back, that's our planning committee night. That'd be a perfect opportunity for a lot of these updates for us.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
And those committee meetings start at 6 o'clock.
Here?
Yep, right here.
The facilities, the buildings and grounds facilities committee, I don't know the official name, apologize, that is held upstairs in this building, on the second floor, in the kitchen. So that might be a good one to attend also. And then the board planning meeting is in here at 7 o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment tonight?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the student representative who brought up the honors English class, and I was wondering why it's not being offered? For just juniors and seniors, or why is that class not being offered?
Mr. Wassler, would you like to answer that?
Yes, you do.
Side by side answers.
You have to hook to Mike.
So what we did is traditionally, we had an academic and an honors, and that was the only track. For a while, we had a college and the high school course that was split, but the way it was offered no longer fits our master schedule design. So this year, that course came out. We are putting that course back in next year. So what we've done this year is our pilot of AP English Language has included elements of the honors English 11 course. So we migrated some of that course content into the AP language, and then we've allowed the time to migrate some of that other remaining content into the college and the high school English class. So while the honors level class itself no longer exists, we've actually added two additional options, then migrated that content into those. So while the course doesn't exist, we've actually moved into other places, and we've added those two courses to our program of studies.
Yeah. No, I don't.
But I just don't want to overlook the fact that, as much as these new buildings are nice, that that's the most important thing. And to have a student who wants a class not available, I guess it is, so I was incorrect, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mal. Anybody else? Okay. With that, I'd like to inform you of our next meetings. As we just discussed, this Thursday, February 22nd, we have our board committee meetings beginning at 6 o'clock PM in this building, and our board planning meeting at 7 o'clock PM in this room. And then on Tuesday, March 20th, 2018, we have our board voting meeting at 7 o'clock PM here. So if there is nothing else for the agenda tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Motion carries, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.